I now call the June 7th, 2016 regular council meeting to order. Would council members? Well, um, the count, uh, the Chair would entertain a motion by minute action to excuse the absence of Councilman Schlogger and Councilman Pacheco. Councilman Pacheco's got a graduation that he's attending and Councilman Schlogger has a similar scheduling conflict. So, I would entertain a motion to excuse the absence of Councilman Schlogger and Pacheco.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Miller. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. And before we get into the pledge, Vice Mayor Kathy has a word about the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, earlier this morning, there was an initial steering committee meeting for the long-range comprehensive plan for the city of Casper. We have been chastised at times for not viewing far enough ahead, not being visionaries, and for not having transparency. This meeting, there will be a meeting tomorrow night at 5:30 at the Wonder Bar, which will be one of the initial first listening sessions by the consultants for the long-range plan. The public is invited to this. The consultants are interested in community input. They will be setting up a website. There will be questionnaires on the website to be able to address concerns of the citizens. We encourage you to participate in this process. This is not looking back at what Casper was, what Casper has been. This is to be looking forward to what you as the citizens of Casper would like to see 10 years from now, 20 years from now. So we appreciate the input from all ages and all people. But like I said, tomorrow night is the first meeting at the Wonder Bar at 5:30. There will be another one July the 9th. I do not have a time or location yet, but please participate in this process. This will be an ongoing process over the next nine to 12 months. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Reiterate, 1730 hours tomorrow, Wonder Bar. Please join me with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the May 17th, 2016, regular council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune, May 27th, 2016.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Any corrections? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Chair, we entertain a motion to approve by minute action the June 17th, 2016 bills and claims as audited by City Manager McDonald.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Miller. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Thank you. Council will now address the main business portion of the meeting. Council carries out business by three types of action, by ordinance, by resolution, and by minute action. Ordinances require three readings and votes, whereas other items are passed by one. Ordinances create or modify law, whereas resolutions and minute actions provide for council to carry out its business. These various actions have different publication and public hearing requirements. Items may be considered by consent or not consent. Consent items are typically routine and will not be discussed by council. Items not listed as consent will be discussed by council. And there is process for the public as well as council members to remove a title from consent for that discussion. Council will now consider establishing the schedule of future public hearings, which are held for the purpose of obtaining public input. Public hearings are held for items such as annexations, liquor licenses, transactions, and the passing of the budget, zone changes. Public hearings also require public notice via publication in the newspaper. Please read the consent agenda titles.
Established June 21st, 2016 as the public hearing date for consideration of the transfer of ownership and location of retail liquor license number 15 OC Casper LLC located at 3580 East 2nd Street. Established June 21st, 2016 as the public hearing date for consideration of the appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to deny a conditional use permit for an accessory building garage with 19-foot-high walls in excess of the 12-foot maximum wall height permitted in an R2 one-unit residential zoning district on Lot 8, Block 7, Pineview Meadows Edition Number 2, subdivision Number 1, located at 2850 East 5th Street.
Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, establish the public hearing dates just read.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Vice Mayor Kathy, seconded by Councilman Hiley. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now hold previous scheduled public hearings for the purpose of obtaining public input. Public hearings are held for items such as annexations, liquor license transactions, passage of the budget, and zone changes. The city attorney will present applicable exhibits for the issue and the city manager will give council a report. Members of the audience will then be asked to speak either in favor or against the issue, and then council will discuss the issue and act upon it if necessary. Next item will be the consideration of an annexation by a resolution and the third reading of an ordinance. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of annexation and zoning of the Heritage Hills Edition Number 5 subdivision. City Attorney Lubin, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. There are three exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Liz Becker to V.H. McDonald dated May 27th, 2016. Exhibit number two, the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated May 27th, 2016. And exhibit number three, that being the Heritage Hills Edition Number 5 Annexation Report, that document being dated February of 2016.
City Manager McDonald.
Your Honor, there are two final actions proposed tonight for the city council to consider in this annexation, annexation platting and zoning of Heritage Hills Edition Number 5. The first action is consideration of a resolution finding the annexation of Heritage Hills Edition Number 5 complies with Wyoming State Statutes 15-1-402, with the city specifically, with the city council specifically making the following findings. Number one, the annexation of the area is for the protection of health, safety, and welfare of the persons residing in the area and in the city because the public utilities, including water and/or sewer, will be made available to the property owners. Finding two, the area will constitute a natural, geographical, economical, and social part of the city because the area is adjacent to properties currently located within the city limits of Casper, with this area not being isolated by any natural or man-made features and is a natural extension of the city limits. Finding three, the area is a logical and feasible addition to the city and the extension of basic and other services customarily available to the residents of the city can reasonably be furnished to the area because the area is adjacent to the properties currently being served by the city services. Fourth finding, the annexation is, of the area is contiguous with the adjacent, contiguous with and adjacent to the city limits. The fifth finding, the city does not operate its own electric utility, however, Rock Mountain Power will provide electric services to this area as they do for the balance of the city Casper. And the last finding, all the conditions required set forth in Wyoming State Statutes 15-1-402(c) exist, and the required procedures for the annexation of the area have been met. Annexation report has been prepared pursuant to Wyoming statutes and disseminated to the affected landlords according to, in accordance with Wyoming law. And for this, all the legal notices have been made to announce this public hearing and advertised on the, on the number of required dates with everything, everything wrapped up with that. The second action is the third and final consideration of ordinance approving the annexation, platting, and zoning of the area. This ordinance was previously considered and passed on March 1st and March 15th, 2016.
Thank you, City Manager McDonald. I've noticed that on our graphic that we've posted, it says addition number four, and in the script it says addition number five. Is this a Scribner's error, or?
The number four was the previous.
Okay.
The number four was the previous addition and annexation, and then five is the new.
And that's, that's number five. And now that you pointed out, I see the difference in blue.
Light difference in color.
Light blue. Okay. Thank you. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issues involving Heritage Hills Edition Number 5 to please approach the lectern. Those who wish to speak in favor. Okay. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issues involving, involving Heritage Hills Edition Number 5 to please approach the lectern. To speak in opposition. Welcome, Mr. Giles.
Woody Giles, 290 East Magnolia. I'm not for or against, I just had a couple of questions, because I don't know where this is. Could somebody explain kinda what neighborhood this is?
South Casper, there's, there's Wyoming Boulevard.
Is that, that's Wyoming, outer drive there?
Right.
Okay.
And so it is, it is east of McKinley and south of 21st Street.
So this will be served by the, that new water tank that was built, part of the same one that's serving Gosfield Village, correct?
I vaguely recall that parts of, parts of this are gonna require Zone 3. Is that true? No? Okay. Okay. So mostly Zone 2, already has water. The corner, according to Public Services Director.
So it's not gonna be served by the new water tank on Country Club?
Um, the corner is going to need Zone 3 water.
I don't know Zone 2 from 3, I just.
Okay. Well, the, the tank that they're going to build.
Another tank?
For Zone 3 is going to service a corner of this.
And the new tank will be state and city money, and like the last one?
It's in the works, and city and state money.
Okay. Okay, well, I did the math on the last tank, and it cost, was it 5 million in state money and, and everybody in the state coughed up 5 bucks, and then everybody in the city coughed up an additional 32 or 38 total. And we built the second water tank, and we put about $60 million in the pockets of just a few people, and I just thought we were gonna do it again, and I just was curious if we were gonna do that, so that's all I had.
Okay. Anyone else to speak in opposition to the issues involving Heritage Hills Edition Number There being no others to speak for or against Heritage Hills Edition Number 5, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution finding facts pursuant to Wyoming Statute 151402 regarding the annexation of 41.76 acres described as Heritage Hills Edition Number 5 to the city of Casper, Natchon County, Wyoming.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution just read.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Powell. Discussion? Okay.
I was just gonna say, we've, we've seen this issue before, and this one follows the rules.
Right. And, and we've talked with this developer, and we've kind of said no in spirit and yes in spirit, and this is, this is progress. Progress. Any more discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. Oh, no. Please read the ordinance by title only.
Nope.
Nope.
You're right.
All right. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Now you read. Now you do the ordinance. Um, really? Okay. The Chair would entertain a. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance approving the annexation, platting, and zoning creating Heritage Hills Edition Number 5 to the city of Casper and also approving the Heritage Hills Edition Number 5 subdivision agreement.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Johnson.
Just recall that this neighborhood, the intention is to build some, some medium-priced houses that, that is gonna fill a niche that is, is open in this community, and, and for that purpose, I think it's, it's a welcome addition.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the issuance of microbrewery liquor license number 3. City Attorney Lubin, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. There are four exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Tracy L. Belser. Two, V.H. McDonald dated June 7th, 2016. Exhibit number two, the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated June 2nd, 2016. Exhibit number three, that being the affidavit of the website publication as published on the city of Casper website dated May 13th, 2016. And exhibit number four, that actually being the liquor license application in this matter, which was filed on May 4th, 2016.
Thank you. City Manager McDonald, it's your report.
Your Honor, an application has been submitted for a microbrewery license to be located at 1530 Burlington Avenue, with the applicant being Skull Tree Brewing LLC. The license is, is a microbrewery, meaning they can, they can brew on the, on the premise. Malt beverages limited to 15,000 barrels a year and no less than 100 barrels a year, with some limited sale off-site, off-premise for personal consumption. The, if issue, this would be liquor, microbrewery license number 3. There is no food service, no food services planned for this location, and all the appropriate advertising and web publishing has been down for this application.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issuance of microbrewery liquor license number 3 to please approach the lectern. To speak in favor of issuance. Welcome, gentlemen.
Hello, Council Mayor. My name is Bob Wazinski. My wife and I, my wife Cindy, Ty Martinez and Nicole Martinez are Skull Tree Brewing Do you want a vision of us?
Um, yes.
Yeah, our goal is to first start manufacturing kegs of beer to sell to local businesses. Some, major goal is gonna be involved in the community. We're already, I do volunteer work for Food for Thought, we're already working with them to do maybe a collaboration with them. They're, they're growing hops for us, and, you know, that's the kind of involvement we want as proceeds through the community. And of course, you know, to grow a successful business.
Right. Questions for Bob Wazinski. Okay, I have one.
Okay.
I don't know if this qualifies as a snarky question.
Okay.
But there is a, a skull tree in Lahitis, Texas. Lahitis is a tiny little community in the Big Bend area of Texas, and this is such a backwater that there's a bridge going across the Rio Grande, and people come and go without border guards. Well, at least they used to. And on the tree that's right next to the bridge are catfish skulls from times past, and they're ginormous, and they look like alien creatures. So if you need any help with your logo design.
How do you know these things?
I will.
I will help you with that.
Definitely very interested and would like to.
Okay. Um, well, you've probably got the logo stuff covered already. You mentioned something about local growers of your hops?
Yes. So I was a commercial brewer in the past, for the last about six years here locally. Tried to establish a lot of raw materials that are produced locally. I made beer with locally Wyoming State grown grain, trying to resource locally grown hops, which I used in the past two years. And so that's something that we'd like to establish, like using the tawa, using what is grown around here for Wyoming pride and represent us, and something that the community, community can identify with as well, and also feel that pride of like, yeah, this was grown here, have a connection with and establish with the culture and with the community, so.
Well, I think that with the economic unrest, I think local food is going to be more and more important, and encouraging local farmers to have an outlet, even if they're just got a beautiful hops field, is a good thing. Absolutely. So I, I applaud that effort. Okay, um, any, any other questions? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Chris Corless, 4070 Brenton Drive. I'm in favor of the brewery permit and would speak for it. Also, they're growing locally, but also their byproducts can also be used by local agricultural folks. The spent grains can be used to feed animals as a good source for the animals, and, and that has been done in the past too by other breweries in the community, so I'm for it. Thank you.
Do we call that silage?
No.
No?
No.
All right. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Dayton Anderson, 356 South Kimball Street. I am here to speak in favor for the application of the microbrewery license. I'd like to provide you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council by way of the mayor, with a comprehensive list of independent production breweries from the state of Wyoming. From Cheyenne, there's Freedom Edge Brewing Company. From our friends in Cody, there is Wyoming Territory Brewing. In Buffalo, Wyoming, there is Clear, Clear Creek, excuse me, Brewing Company. Our friends in Jackson have Snake River Brewing Company, the oldest brewing company in Wyoming established in 1994. Pinedale, Wyoming, features the Wind River Brewing Company. Rock Springs, Wyoming, Bitter Creek Brewing Company. Powell, Wyoming, features a very small brewer named Wild West Brewing Company. Our friends in Tensleep have the Tens Street Brewing Company. Our neighbors in Coal Country and Gillette have Gillette Brewing Company. Our friends to the south feature Headstrong Brewing Company. From the Ivory Tower in Laramie, the Coal Creek Tap. And from Thermopolis, One Eye Buffalo Brewing Company. And of course, everyone in Sheridan has probably heard of the Black Tooth Brewing Company and the Luminous Brewing Company. And most recently, a highly decorated brewing company out of the small community of Alpine, Wyoming, that has just started their independent operation named Melvin. Out of Casper, Wyoming, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have none. I believe it's high time that the city of Casper takes ownership of a brand that we can get behind and embrace as something that is our own. When I travel around the state of Wyoming, I go, where, where do people meet? Well, people meet at the brewing company to talk about local issues or just to solve the rest of the world's problems, if nothing else in spirit. A little bit about craft brewing. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, from brewersassociation.org, in 2015, craft brewing accounted for 4,269 individual breweries across the United States, resulting in $22.3 billion in profit. Craft brewing, which is limited to, limited to 6 million barrels or less produced, accounts for 21% of the market share of all beer consumed in the United States of America. Last year, craft beer saw a 13% rise in volume produced. 620 new breweries opened nationwide, only 68 closed. Craft brewing is responsible for 121,843 jobs. That is up 6,000 jobs from 2014. I believe it is a good move for the city of Casper to invest wisely in this opportunity, and I believe we should take ownership of it and get behind this. I can speak personally that Ty Martinez brews some amazing beer, and once this gets up and running, I would like to see all of you there, and I'll buy each one.
Thank you.
I'll yield for questions, Mr. Mayor.
Questions from Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, excuse me. Councilman Hiley.
Real quickly, and it is a good consideration, the jobs that may be created by this business, and probably appropriate to ask the business owners, but do you have a notion of employment at, or proposed employment at this site?
Mr. Mayor and Councilman by way of the mayor, I do not know for sure what employment opportunities are gonna come of it. Microbrewing probably would lend itself to a very small job market. However, that being said, I'd like to cite Black Tooth Brewing with their recent expansion, Black Tooth Brewing with their recent expansion. They expanded recently to a very, very large, almost overwhelmingly big production facility up in Sheridan, Mr. Council, or Councilman by way of the mayor. This resulted in 20 new jobs created in the community of Sheridan. As of today, Snake River Brewing out of Jackson provides 19 full-time jobs. I believe that once, once Mr. Martinez gets started with his brewing operation, the product is going to be such that there's going to be high demand for it, and he's probably gonna need a hand, Mr. Mayor. So I would imagine that maybe not next year, maybe not five years down the road, but I imagine that once this gets started, Mr. Mayor, we're gonna see the opportunity for several full-time jobs for people here in Casper.
Thank you. Thank you. Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else to speak in favor? Welcome, sir.
My name is David Dodge. I would like to speak in favor of the Skull Tree Brewing Company liquor license. I think that not only will it be good in possibly bringing jobs in the future, but looking at what was. but looking at what was aforementioned with the spent grains going to local agriculture and possibly sourcing some of the ingredients from local business owners, farmers and such. It's also going to bring in an opportunity for the mass culture that's happening all over the United States as people travel and are coming through to have something that is Casper and it is brand new. It is the only one of its kind. And being that it's not a food service, as was earlier mentioned, I think that provides opportunities, not necessarily for employment, but so that other businesses will pick up that sort of thing because they're going to come and visit and try something that they've never tried before, but they're going to eat and sleep somewhere else. And so it's going to be good for our economy locally as well, I think. And that's pretty much all I had to say about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Dodge? Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor? All right. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issuance of microbrewery license number three to please approach the lectern, speak in opposition. There being no others to speak either for or against the issuance of microbrewery liquor license number three, I now declare the public hearing closed. The chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the issuance of microbrewery liquor license number three. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Kathy, seconded by Vice, Councilman Powell. Discussion. Councilman Miller.
I'll just bring up one thing. I think this is a pretty cool idea. And when I first saw that we were going to be talking about this, I was pretty excited. But I've been all throughout the state and been to all these breweries and always wondered, well, when are we going to get our unique name here? And I think this is a step towards that. And I know there have been a few attempts through Casper to do this, but I think this is a really cool opportunity. This is something you'll see in any city nowadays is these little brewpub, these microbreweries just kind of coming up. And it's really a unique opportunity and this type of thing. And I think it helps define the culture of a town and you'll see that. You know, you talk about the places like Powell and Tensleep and they're able to support these businesses. And I hope this is able to get a few others coming too, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Just a word to future brewers. There are three kinds of fizzy alcohol. There's the Pilsner beer, there's the ale, everybody's familiar with that. But there's also the lambic, which you don't put yeast in. You let the stuff drift in from just the environment. And that's what actually spurs your fermenting growth. Anyway, lambics are delicious also. Anyway, any more discussion or amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Consideration of the next item will be by ordinance. Please read the consent ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance amending section 9.44.030 of the Casper Municipal Code pertaining to discharge of firearms and other weapons.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading the consent ordinance just read. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman, Vice Mayor Kathy, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 8A1, a resolution authorizing a contract with Valley Information Systems, Inc., doing business as Postal Pros Southwest for utility bill printing, insertion, mailing and electronic bill presentment and payment services. Item 8A2, a resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of equipment for our 2017 Ford Explorer. Item 8A3, a resolution, authorizing resolution with, for an agreement with JTL Group, Inc., doing business as Knife River for the 2016 Chip Seal Project. Item 8A4, a resolution authorizing change order number one to the agreement with JTL Group, Inc., doing business as Knife River for the compost yard addition project. Item 8A5, a resolution authorizing, a resolution authorizing a procurement agreement with Water Technology Group for flight pumping systems components. Item 8A6, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Western Plains Landscaping LLC, doing business as Three Chord Construction for the 2016 solid waste facilities improvements. Item 8A7, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a notice to proceed with Jacobs Engineering Group for the Casper Ranch Development. Item 8A8, a resolution authorizing change order number one with Integrity Tank Services LLC for a price increase as part of the Pratt to North Tank interior paint, painting project. Item 8A9, a resolution authorizing change order number three to the agreement with JTL Group, Inc., doing business as Knife River for the West Dalestone Highway and Walnut Street Reconstruction Project. Item 8A10, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Installation and Service Company, Inc. for the Recreation Center Parking Lot Improvements Project. Item 8A11, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Western Plains Landscaping LLC, doing business as Three Chord Construction for the Washington Park Pool Renovations Project. Item 8A12, a resolution authorizing a contract for the Casper Area Metropolitan Planning Organization and Michael Baker International for a comprehensive planned transportation element update for the towns of Mills, Evansville and Bar Nun. Item 8A13, a resolution authorize, approving the vacation and replat of lots five and six Harmony Hills Edition Number Two, Phase Two, and lot four A Harmony Hills Edition Number Two, Phase Two, lots three A and four A to create Harmony Hills Edition Number Two, Phase Two A. Item 8A14, a resolution approving the vacation and replat of Eastward Heights Eight, lots 11 through 15 to create Eastward Heights Eight, Lot 16. Item 8A15, a resolution rescinding resolutions number 1472 and 1473 and establishing fees for the use of the Casper Family Aquatic Center and the outdoor swimming pools.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Miller. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council now consider minute action items. These are routine business items that do not require a resolution. Please read the consent minute action titles.
Item 9A1, authorizing a refund to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Item 9A2, authorizing the purchase of one new Ford Explorer from Fremont Motor Company to be used in the Casper Police Department. Item 9A3, authorizing the purchase of one new utility vehicle from Stotz Equipment to be used at the Hogadon section of the Leisure Services Department. Item 9A4, authorizing the purchase of two new Mack side load sanitation trucks from CMI Tico to be used by the Solid Waste Division of the Public Services Department. Item 9A5, authorizing the purchase of one new duplex forklift from Wyoming Machinery Company to be used in the Solid Waste Division of the Public Services Department.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Miller, seconded by Councilman Hiley. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Your honor. I'm sorry, I have to take my leave and I apologize to the people who are about to speak, but I have 1,200 miles to travel. Right. And he needed to be out just at this time. So thank you, Councilman Powell. Okay. Now it's time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. We ask that you please state your name and address. Anyone want to address council tonight? Hello, Mr. Zimmerley.
Good evening. I'm Dale Zimmerley from 3035 Bel Air. The Lord Jesus laid on my heart to share something with you, so I'm going to do that now. Psalm 49. Hear this, all ye peoples. Listen, all ye who live in this world, both low and high, rich and poor alike. My mouth will speak words of wisdom. The meditation of my heart will give you understanding. I will turn my ear to a proverb. With a harp, I will expound my riddle. Why should I fear when evil days come, when wicked deceivers surround me? Those who trust in their wealth and boast of their riches? No one can redeem the life of another or give to God a ransom for them. The ransom for life is costly. No payment is ever enough, so that they should live on forever and not see decay. For all can see that the wise die, that the foolish and senseless also perish, leaving their wealth to others. Their tombs will remain their houses forever, their dwellings for endless generations, thought they had, though they had names, land, named after themselves. People, despite their wealth, do not endure. They are like beasts that perish. This is the faith of those who trusted in themselves and other followers who approve their sayings. They are like sheep and destined to die. Death will be their shepherd. Their forms will decay in the grave, far from their princely mansions. But God will redeem me from the realm of death. He will surely take me to himself. Do not be overawled when others grow rich, when the splendor of their houses increase, for they will take nothing with them when they die. Their splendor will not descend with them. Though while they live, they count themselves blessed and people praise you with your, when you prosper, they will join those who have gone before them and who will never again see the light of life. People, people who have wealth but lack understanding are like the beasts that perish. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council? Welcome, sir.
Keith Rollin, 542 South Durbin. I know the budget doesn't come up for a vote until the next meeting, but I thought it might be time now to make a few comments on it because usually when the budget actually comes up, it's usually just sort of rubber stamped and sort of late to make any thoughtful input into how possible changes could be made. The first thing I noticed with the budget is revenue and expenditures don't match. You're $4 million off and you're basically, your plan is, it seems to be drawing, to draw down your savings that you have. Well, given the fact that the economy could get worse, my suggestion is to cut more expenditures. Really can't increase revenue more at this point, but cut the expenditures so it becomes almost even. Then throughout the year, if you find things getting worse, at that point, you make a decision. Do we cut further down even more or do we draw on our savings? You don't go into a budget process drawing on the savings. That's insanity, especially when you know things might get worse. And I think your projections for revenue is going to be, is off. You're talking about only a 4% decline from this year for sales tax revenue. I think you're going to have a combination of people moving up, not spending money. You have businesses not spending money. You're going to have businesses who collected the sales tax revenue who are not going to be paying you because they're going to go bankrupt. They're going to collect this money for a couple of months, not pay you, go bankrupt. You have a very low priority lien, I mean, rather claim. Federal government's going to have more because they're probably not going to pay out their withholding tax to the federal government. They've probably been using this for operating purposes as well. And they go bankrupt, all of a sudden, there's not much money left. What's left goes to the federal government. I also think that we need to stop spending money on capital items, including the Hogadon Lodge. I don't think you've signed a contract yet, hopefully you haven't. You need to put that on hold. I ski, I've been skiing since I was a little kid when we had the bear traps bindings. I will not ski at that ski resort. The chairlift is unsafe and the lodge stinks, really smells. Either you do both or you do neither. Either you replace that chairlift and replace the lodge or you do neither one. If everybody loves that much, that lot, the place so much as I talked about it about five weeks ago, then sell it. Let private enterprise operate that business, sell it to somebody else, let them put the capital money in. Why are we as a city operating like something that normally is operated as a business? These are businesses. In fact, my very first loss in stock investment was when I was in the seventh grade buying Cas, Cas K Mountain. I lost everything, went bankrupt. So I learned my lesson, don't invest in ski resorts. But if you want to have a new ski resort, maybe we done have a private enterprise. The same thing is with the event center. I've been saying for 10 years, sell that white elephant. We've been pouring more and more capital into that thing and it's just a cash flow in the wrong direction. We should have sold it years ago. You get two things. You don't have a negative cash flow and you have professional management. I know you're talking about possibly getting outside professional management, trying to pull in more revenue, et cetera, but that should have been done years ago. The third area for possible revenue is your water. About eight or nine years ago, there was a meeting of the city council where the city manager basically railroaded a $3 million purchase of water rights with the city council. The only member that was still, was on the council at that time was Ms. Schlegler. Other people were like, hold it. They just knew about two days beforehand about this purchase of this water rights for $3 million. Do we still own that? And if so, do we really need it? And what's the market value for that? Let's sell it. If you really don't need it, if our growth projection, maybe we're talking about growth projections of that meeting, you know, we could be 80,000 people, you know, in the year 2025 or some ridiculous figure. All right, then we needed it, but we're not going to be that figure maybe ever. Do we really need that $3 million water rights? And if it was so valuable and they said we get such a bargain basement price on it, maybe it's worth a lot more. Let's investigate selling that. I went through your budget itself. And if I was like at the president or our governor in some states where they could do line item veto, there's a few things in there at veto. One of them was, you know, the pathway for a bike path for $300,000. We don't need that. I mean, I ride my bike all the time. Nobody obeys those things in other cities. They drive into those things, there's lines, it's not supposed to go in. They go in anyhow, it almost hits you. It's worthless, a worthless expenditure. Do we really need to pay $85,000 for the interior painting job of the shop? Or $31,000 for interior painting job of the car wash? I also think that we need to investigate possibly canceling the bus system. We did have the bus system 10 years ago. We have it now. People are talking about transit. I think we're thinking, they're talking about putting a new subway system, putting an A-line in someplace. The city, those buses do not save any pollution. They have, the routes are convoluted all over the place. They burn up a lot of oil or whatever, they're using diesel or whatever it is. These are not natural gas buses. A lot of cities have those for reducing pollution, which we don't have. If that was your goal, if, they're all over the place, but then no one's riding on that particular route. We're not saving any, any pollution control by having these buses, not at all. In fact, we're creating more faster go, definitely get rid of them. We can't afford them. They're too expensive per capita which you use. If there's places need to be cut, that's another place to cut. Then you, because we're at this budget, we have to talk about buying four new buses, buses rather. If we don't do the bus system, we don't need to make that capital expenditure. That's a place, you don't do it a year from now when the economy really is terrible. Oh, but we just bought these buses, we don't really want to cancel them. Now is the time to think about canceling them. If in fact, you're going to be paying for the new buses, if you're not going to pay for them, then you can, don't pay it now and you cancel the whole thing. But don't do it a year from now, we just bought them. By the way, we're really short of money. The last point is, I'm not sure if you're aware of the fact that we could really get killed in Wyoming regarding severance tax for the mineral industry, especially the coal industry. Are you aware of the fact that three of the major coal companies are in bankruptcy? And that their leases have to be transferred by the Secretary of the Department of Interior? A docket, document was filed, let's see, what date is this? May 20th by the federal government. They are asserting that L Financial Resources Disclosure Document does not conformant with Bankruptcy Code statutes. In that document, they are asserting one important issue that has been brushed over with most of these bankrupt coal companies. They just assume the bankruptcy judge can transfer these leases. Most leases. Most leases can be transferred or voided by a bankruptcy judge, except coal leases cannot. And I'm gonna quote you from the, from the actual filing. Any federal coal lease is subject to the transfer prohibition set forth in thirty U.S. Code one eighty-seven. Quote, "No lease issued under the authority of this act shall be assigned, sublet, except with the consent of the Secretary of Interior." Now, with the Obama administration being anti-coal, there is the possibility that the Secretary of Interior will not transfer these leases. These coal mines could be shut. Now, if Trump becomes president, it's indicated he will transfer the leases. And these coal companies will just stay in chapter eleven until he becomes president, and they'll be transferred at that point in time. If Hillary Clinton becomes president, there is, the Greens are planning this to squeeze Hillary Clinton. They're gonna say, we are gonna push the Democrats in close states like Colorado, Wisconsin, et cetera, to vote Green Party candidate and not Democrat, if you do not promise our priority to not approve the transfer of the leases. They want them not to be approved. They're waiting in the, basically in the bushes, until this plan actually is approved by the court, and then they're gonna jump on it. They're waiting for it to be approved, because then you have all hell being loose, because it's already approved, and also now you can't go back to it and say, we're not gonna approve anymore, the Interior Secretary just says, we're not gonna transfer it. These, these companies could find themselves with no operation. And these are huge. The Tribune has kept very, the company, other country, uh, the, the, uh, city and the county and well informed about what's happening, except this particular issue. No one really knows about it. When I've asked people about it, even colleagues, they say, oh, that's gonna be, that's no big deal. They're gonna be transferred, the judge can transfer it. No, it clearly states in the statute, no, they cannot. They can transfer leases, but not coal leases. You got, the council needs to be aware of the fact, we're gonna get hit possibly in severance tax decline in the future, and the fact that your whole economy in the state will be destroyed if these coal mines don't operate. There's gonna be a domino effect, so these people not shopping in Casper, et cetera, et cetera, and further cuts in, uh, city sales tax. So really consider that, we could really, really become a Detroit. All these things, consider is reconsider your budget. I think you need to make drastic cuts, including a five percent pay cut, cut the bus, cut all these capital expenditures, try to sell your water, try to sell, it's gonna take years to do that, and try to sell the event center, it's gonna take years. Try to sell Hogadon, don't sign that contract to build that, uh, new, uh, bathroom and, you know, the restaurants and everything else that you're building up there, I don't like having a bar year round, but anyhow. Really, you really need to rethink that, especially in light of the fact that we could really become a Detroit in the near future.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Rowland?
Well, I think one thing that I will point out, that contract was already signed.
Oh.
Construction started yesterday.
Oh. That's why I ask.
That's going to happen. By the same token, I believe that there are more drastic things that you should be considering as well when you're talking about the coal. Thirty percent of America's power is still generated by that coal. If you shut those mines, that shuts off thirty percent of the power to the United States.
Agreed.
And I believe the people in L.A. and New York City will wind up being a little bit surprised when they're sweltering in the heat and freezing in the winter. And I don't believe Berkshire Hathaway, the owner of Burlington Northern Railroad, will be all that pleased with the shutting down of the coal mines either. So I think there are more broader issues nationwide that need to be considered before we literally jump into the deep end of the pool. And I believe, and I wish that you would have listened and seen some of the other presentations as far as how we developed that budget and our long-term philosophy to develop a spending plan without jumping into the deep end of the pool, and to make this a more gradual decline rather than trying to cut everything. I remember in one of your previous presentations, you said we needed to shut down all of the swimming pools.
Right, I agree.
You know.
Other cities have.
At that point anymore, and I don't believe the citizens of Casper would really appreciate the drastic cuts that you're talking about.
With regards to the coal industry with Berkshire Hathaway, he also owns specific power that has made a decision to all of your power plants not to use coal by a certain specific date, I can't remember, it's twenty twenty-one or something to that effect, including the one that I've, over here that they own. It's not gonna be used coal, it's gonna be natural gas or some other means. Also with Vargardia, Los Angeles, they have the thing now where they, they are canceling Peabody's coal lease to go to the power plant in, there that goes to California. That's being canceled right now in courts, they're challenging, they have said, it's null and void, because when they went bankrupt, we have the right to void that contract. They are voiding that contract already. As New York, as New York City concerned, they don't get anything from coal. It comes from other uranium and other things, they don't get any coal. They already talked about Bloomberg doesn't want coal, the environment there don't want coal. So when you're making those two examples, it doesn't happen. Agreed thirty percent does, but there are other mines in the countries that will rev up. This may be a huge political thing, but the Greens see this, remember, they try to co-close Peabody based on self bonding. They see this, they're not rational people, they see this as a way to get these mines closed. And they will attempt to close them. There are other coal mines in the countries that are not federal leases, that could pass, they're gonna argue, could pick up the slack. But the point is, this is a means for them to close this. Remember Obama already says, he will not allow any more new federal leases to go forward. Is this a new lease? Is this gonna be an out, he's gonna say, this is a new lease, it's a transfer, but is this actually a new one? I'm just cautioning you on this. I mean, I invest like crazy in the coal industry, I trade the bonds all the time, and the stock and other things like that. And I've been monitoring this particular thing, is, it so far has no impact on the price of the bonds, but people who own, I'm talking about tons of them, like it really gets capital and stuff like that, Mark Praskin and I have been talking about this, this could kill us in the event that those aren't transferred. El Financial Resources will be the first one, they will be not transferred, the other ones would follow suit. But don't assume just because it's thirty percent that these Greens may not win. Remember, we're not talking about rational people here. Obama's not a rational person when it comes to some of these things. This is, this is a word of caution. And yes, I think we should have closed the pools, we should never built a cedar pool.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
More questions? Any more questions for Mr. Rowland? Okay. I don't have a question, I just have a comment. And that is, I took notes because I didn't know that it takes the Secretary of the Interior to transfer coal leases, and a bankruptcy judge cannot do that. That, that means that there really are huge levers in play. And, you know, it does depend on who we get as president to name that next Secretary of the Interior. Okay, anyone else want to address counsel?
Mayor, counsel.
Welcome, Mr. Rowland.
I can call y'all gentlemen, and I, don't laugh at my shirt, I'm early for celebrating my birthday on June fourteenth, which is Flag Day, but the reason I really wore it was, over the commission meeting, uh, two years in a row, they, they forgot to fly the flag at Crimson Dawn on Memorial Day, and Mr. Forgelene is, I believe, a vet. And, uh, so I've asked him to give me a combination to the lock on the flagpole, so next year maybe I can get it up there for him, so. I, I think I got my message across, but I thought I'd better give you a little heads up here. Got a, uh, we have a brackish water stream coming out from underneath the target end of the gun range. And it's draining right down, and confluences with some clear water that's following the original stream bed. Now, I should have brought the, the map to pass around, but, or the drawings. It's on the northwest corner, and there's about thirty-five foot of fill. There was so much water on the top of that, due to the lack of any compaction of the grocer, grouser bars on the, the dozers, that, you know, it was like quicksand running around and all of that. And that water stood on it, and it soaked down. But I was shocked to follow that drainage. And they've dammed it in several places, and the Army Corps of Engineers is fully aware of what's going on, so is the EPA office in Denver. And so is the Wyoming DQ, and I think they were up there pulling water samples today. Thus out of professional courtesy, I come before you guys tonight and tell you that there's a sink that all of that drainage runs into. It, it shocked me. But then again, it shouldn't. There's, Casper Mountain has a fault, and there's caverns all over the, underneath of that. And it's going right down, and I think it's on your guys' property where it's going in. Most of us have wells anywhere from five to six hundred foot deep. Bill Street and I were told by Mrs. Roser that Mickey had drilled, uh, McMurray had drilled a fifteen hundred foot dry hole. I had, had the threat and to go to the Attorney General's office to get the state engineer to call me back. And he wanted me to pinpoint it down, and that's ridiculous. All I gotta do is tell him the township and range and the section. So I'll find out about the dry hole, or if it's a good hole. The Biathlon Club was going to drill a hole, or well, on the south end of Bear Trap. Now, why would you wanna do that when you're putting a venue way over there on East End Road? You'd think you'd wanna drill a well, or you're gonna put the lodge. Well, years ago, the Parks Department tried to drill a well, and if you look just out to the north and to the east just a little bit in the open meadow, there's a concrete covert sticking up out there, and that's where drilling come. I think it was Teton Exploration Drilled that years ago, when they were in business, but they hit an underground cavern and down the drill string went. And there's a sinkhole where they want to build an amphitheater. I don't know what's up with all these darn amphitheaters. That work comes up at the gun range, too. A natural amphitheater. I mean, I think we're making the sandstone rocks of, of Casper like the red rocks of Colorado. And they've, they've leveled off a plateau on the top, just above the shooting targets that, you know, I think it's gonna be a stage. I don't, I don't think I'm too off on that. That's a great place, it's gonna be for putting campers for the Eclipse Center. Uh, you get in there, it's beautiful in the wintertime, but it's not very pretty right now in the summertime. I don't think it ever will be. But back to this, all of us with these deep wells, and there's a good chance this is lead contamination. A very, very good chance. Bobby, you gotta help me out here. Explosives. I sold the drills, but I, I, I sold the drills, the blasto drills, but I didn't sell the explosives. It's an aluminum nitrate, is it not? Amphlo?
Yep.
That's what they put down the drill holes to blast with. There's residue of that stuff all over. And that may be what's tracing, but I don't think so.
Aluminum nitrates fertilizer.
Exactly. But if you get too much of it, it's not good. Okay? That's what the four oh four Clean Water Act has been hollering about. So, and, and I'm not one of these peoples down on Monsanto, okay? I'm not a tree hugger, I don't eat a lot of granola bars. I don't mean not drugatorily, but anyhow, I think there's a good chance that if this is contaminated water, that it's gonna hit the aquifer. Not a good thing. Back to the well there, we're gonna drill at Bear Trap. I hear this dog and pony show out of the Parks Manager from the county, that they've decided they're gonna take that permit, what's a water well permit, isn't that tough to get? Not that I'm aware of, unless things have really changed. And they wanna drill it next to the well at the fire station, and it already exists. But when I talked to that Parks Manager when they're gonna drill the well down in Bear Trap, I said, how are you gonna get the water up to the two storage tanks, two heated storage tanks? He looked at me like a deer caught in headlights. You gotta have another line run the water up and pump it mechanically, rather than pump it, put it in a tank, let it gravity down. So I don't know what the status of that is. But back to you guys, men, those good neighbors up there. You guys, you're sitting on a pot of gold with the water system that's at Hogadon. We have a real serious issue now that mills did away with their water source that you could haul in, in, in tanks. There's cisterns all over that mountain. Here we are almost, you know, my birthday's on June fourteenth, it's not very far, what's today, the seventh? They still don't have the water system activated at the Lions Camp. So you can go out to the Parks Department, just, you know, looking for revenues, like everybody is, you buy a sixty-five dollar pass to haul that for yearly basis, which is a bargain, trust me on that, they're not charging enough. But, you know, that's fire protection for everybody up there. And that should be a concern to all of you guys with the investment you have up there. Don't lose sight of the fact of, uh, Casper Mountain Park, that's a heck of a piece of real estate you have there. Please don't ever give that to the county, 'cause they're mismanaging the heck out of things up there. But, you know, someday I think we'll be back talking at you to see if we can't get a year-round water station at Hogadon. It'd be a great thing. And maybe we can form a water district to pay for it, but we gotta have the source, and we can partner on something like this. It just makes good sense. There's a lot of people up there that could benefit from that. Your alternatives now are to go way in the heck out on thirty-three mile road, not thirty-three mile on Poison Spider, I think, or out to Evansville, when they were about ready to jerk their water station, 'cause they were having some issues with people messing with the hose. They just should have put a closed circuit TV or a camera up there that could have caught the individuals. But the Coal Creek Fire changed that. I, the one thing I do wanna ask about is the status of the land swap. Is it just basically on hold, Mr. McDonald, or?
Remember to address me, and because of parliamentary procedure.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll ask. City Manager McDonald.
Keep me straight, Mayor.
Where are we with that? Your Honor, we waited for springtime and all the snow to melt to do the survey, and then through the winter, we have looked for other properties to continue the trade effort with, and, uh, we're just kinda holding for the, for the survey work to come up through the engineering firm. Thank you.
The snow is pretty well gone, it's really taken off in this last week, it's surprising, it's drying up pretty good. Uh, the, uh, I did attend the barbecue that the Rotary Club put together, they, they pulled their application for the amphitheater at, uh, Garden Creek, there was about fifty of us there. It's a great count, I think twenty-five, but everybody was pretty vocal. We asked for a show of hands, and nobody raised their hand. But rumor here through the grapevine, which I hear them all, is the Rotary Club's gonna take another run at it. They don't need that Rotary, that amphitheater up there. They've done a wonderful job with the bridge, it's all, it's all handicap, ADA approved. I don't know if you guys have been up there, but there's a walkway to a, a, uh, an observation point. And then there's also, uh, some beautiful benches. If you haven't been up there, I encourage you to do that. Here's what really came out in that discussion that night. And Bill Shellman, bless his heart, said it the best, he said, it's very obvious, there's no element of trust here at all with the county commissioners and then the Toronto County Parks Department. And there was a show of hands, I think, again, Greg can tell you, I, there was so much going on, there's been, I've had so much going on, things run together. But that's, that's the bottom line. There isn't a feeling like that towards the city. But what was really going on there, I think, was the parking lot they're proposing was a trailhead for the bike system. So as this progress is forward, I'd ask you guys as a city council to be sensitive to those neighbors' needs down there, they, they don't want all of this. And that, and then, the element of trust has really been breached with the Roser family. Turns out they've been operating an illegal bed and breakfast at their place. They were sent a summons today, which I have right here, not a summons, but a, they were sent a violation. So I think they already have their lodge, okay? And I would encourage you, I, I've told you this before, and I'm gonna be coming back pretty often. But you know, you, you've only given them a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, I think, or a hundred and sixty-seven. You need to freeze the rest of that money. I'm also hearing through the grapevine that the DCI may be coming in looking at some of this. of this. And it's not pretty. You guys have been really good to me here, and you've been good to all the citizens. You listen, and I'm not blowing smoke at any of you, and you give everybody time, you're very cordial, very much so. And I can't say that across the street, but I'm going to give you all an invitation, if you want to come up. If somebody's got a suburban, I'll take you over there, and I'll show you firsthand what's going on. The snow has melted out enough to where we need to go tour your properties where they ran through there. I was up on the east side of the drainage basin, and I know the private property owners in there. You look back, it looks like strip logging took place on your guys' properties that you can see to the west. You can't, you can't see down to the north, but you can see all the way to town from up there now. And the feedback I'm getting is, you almost have to be a professional athlete at the Olympic level to ski on that up there, and it's very windy, the terrain, and they went and cut much, much more. And, I mean, it's a runaway train wreck. So I think that's basically all I have, other than if you would like to see the pictures, and Mayor, I don't like to tag you sometimes, but you need to know. And I know you'll disperse those accordingly, but I have started a new site called Tracy John Lamont. It's in the political pitch, but I, you know, fifteen minutes before the deadline, I threw my hat and a ring for running for county commissioner, because I got to have a platform, I was forced to by the neighbors up there. And, you know, I'm a public figure, that isn't a political site. And I have been a public figure, Bob will tell you that, going back to, I was probably in my late teens or early twenties. Sean, I give a hard time to, you need to open back up with me, Sean, I'm a good guy. I'm not a bad guy. You know, I was just trying to teach you little things, yeah, so forth, but where's everybody else at tonight?
This is it. It's a warm day, and everybody's thinking about.
Not tough on everybody. But it's an absolute pleasure coming before you guys. Anybody have any questions?
Questions for Tracy Lamont?
Mr. Lamont, if I do take you up on this tour.
Fantastic.
What is your availability? Are you free during the days?
You know, I'm up there most of the time. My ninety-two-year father, I mentioned, just got here today, and we carried him into the house. And I'm so tickled, he made it back. Bob, you need to come up and see my dad. Seriously, he'd love to see you.
Oh, okay.
And Bob goes back with our family in the business circles for years, but I, are you on Facebook, Mike?
I've seen you on Facebook, yes.
Turn off your notifications, because I'm on there all the time, but just send me a private message, and we can hook up from there, and I'll get you my phone number.
Thank you.
And keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to address counsel? Okay, public comments closed. Now's the time we go around the table. We'll start with Councilman Hopkins.
Regan, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mentioned to you before, but I want everybody at home to know that we had our OYD awards that we gave out last week, and it was well attended. This is a group of people that are really working hard to make OYD what it is today and what it will be in the next, in the few years. It's come along, it just is a work in progress, but so far, so good. And thanks to all those people who participated. Go ahead.
Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things. I will be representing the city of Casper at our Wyoming Association of Municipalities convention and Cody and their board meeting and kind of developing on a few things and presenting issues forward on behalf of the city that are important to us for WAM to work on with legislature. Another thing excited for the activities with the CNFR next week, and just real quickly, I thought, we've gotten a few concerns about a few of the resolutions that were on our consent agenda, and just a few comments about the pool fees. One of the things was kind of streamlining fees between two of the pools and the universal passes that you're able to allow to use throughout the whole system and the Aquatics Center. And there was a slight rumor about the Washington Park, and I would hope that item number eleven on our resolution consent agenda would cool your mind, because that's three hundred thirty-one thousand four hundred dollars for our Washington Park pool renovation project. So I hope that's being noticed as well, too, and I think we continue to look at those issues as they are brought to us forward, and I do appreciate the feedback for everyone, and it's good to hear from the people who use these services. So anyways, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hiley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this comment really affects voters in Ward One in the middle of the city. Myself and many of my, many of my neighbors received a postcard from the county clerk informing us that we'd be voting at the industrial building in this coming election and primary. If you usually vote at Casper College, T-Bird Gym, and you received one of those postcards, you should ignore that postcard. The Casper College, T-Bird Gym will remain a polling place, and the county clerk, I understand, is going to send out corrective postcards, but an error was made in their system, and many of us were told where our polling places are being changed, and it was not factually correct. So I wanted to point that out to the people of Ward One and who vote at Casper College.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson.
Not a whole lot. I'll be attending a interview and the listening session for the Comprehensive Plan tomorrow, but I'm not sure I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Kathy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. About a week, week and a half ago, I gave a welcome to Casper opening to the Wyoming Trucking Association. I received a letter back from them today, and I wanted to pass this on. And they had sent out a resolution from the Wyoming Trucking Association, and one of the points in it says, "Now therefore be it resolved by the Wyoming Trucking Association that its members take this opportunity to thank the residents of this fine city for making our stay in Casper a very pleasant one." So I want to say congratulations to all of the citizens of Casper for extending a warm welcome to the people from around the state. The other thing I want to say along those same lines is, several years back, I was in Las Vegas for the National Finals Rodeo, and one of the ads that was on TV for the weeks before that rodeo was be nice to the cowboys. We currently have the College National Finals Rodeo coming to Casper, with the first performance being this coming Sunday, the twelfth, and will be running through the eighteenth. So I would stress, be kind to the young cowboys and cowgirls coming here. This is the height of their collegiate career in rodeo. This is the finals for these young people. They are very fine young people. Some of them are very great college students, and they will actually be receiving some academic awards here for their academic prowess, as well as their activities out of the classroom. So we welcome them, and we want to extend a warm welcome to all of those people coming to town. The other thing, for those that tuned in late, and I apologize that those tuned in early, as Councilman Johnson mentioned, part of the twenty-year long-range comprehensive plan starting to take place over the next nine to twelve months, tomorrow evening at five-thirty at the Wonder Bar, there will be a listening session. And this is to get public input for not what happened twenty years ago in Casper, but for what we would like to see happening twenty years from now in the future for Casper. We, as council, have been accused of not having vision and of not being transparent. This is a time for the citizens of Casper to come and participate in this visioning process and what we would like the city to be for the next ten and twenty years. And we would like the city's input to this process. I thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate people who addressed counsel tonight. I liked, have always liked Psalm forty-nine, because all you got to do is do something like empty out a house or just deal with life and mortality to realize we really are beasts that perish. And we need to keep that in mind, not to get too preoccupied with worldless stuff. I also appreciate the comments from Mr. Rowland. It's good that somebody's out there making note of capital expenditure that could be cut if things become more dire. It's a trade-off. I mean, if we're in challenging economic times, then getting rid of a bus system would be a pretty severe move. Likewise, getting rid of a pool or stopping pools is going to seriously degrade the quality of life for people that live in this town. And if you're a survivor in an inhospitable economic wilderness, it is, it is really important to hold on to some things you can enjoy, like a beautiful outdoor facility, which, yes, Mr. Rowland, we spent a lot of money on that pool. It is nice to have possible exit ramps financially, and I know that the big, big capital purchases are well scrutinized, and we're gonna, we're gonna rein it in. We understand. So thank you for those comments. And thank you, Councilman Hiley, for pointing out that county clerk error. That could be important, and you need to make note before Election Day, because some of us in Ward One are going to actually have to go to the fairgrounds, and it might take a little longer, because a lot of us are going to be going to the fairgrounds now.
It's all your voting.
Yeah, yeah, just vote early. And often, our, our. As far as what I've been doing lately, I was a co-presenter at the OYD Oscars. You know, press coverage doesn't necessarily get the good news, maybe because it's not meaty enough, but recognition of the transformation of a district in our city from fallow to vibrant and innovative, that's something that should be recognized and encouraged, and we did that at the OYD Oscars. I also attended a ribbon cutting at Mike Cedar Pool. It's got a lazy river, that's a beautiful facility, and the lazy river is a new thing that they put into pools, and it's cool. I'm going. And I also attended the groundbreaking for Hogadon yesterday, and groundbreaking, someone around the council table said it was more like a, a ground scraping, ground scratching, because that's some tough dirt out there. Tracy Lamont knows how it is to dig out there. But, so, good things happening, and the next meeting of the city council will be a work session to be held at four-thirty PM Tuesday, June fourteenth, Flag Day.
And the Army's birthday.
The Army's birthday and Tracy Lamont's birthday, June fourteenth. And in the council meeting room, and a regular council meeting to be held at six PM Tuesday, June twenty-first, in the council chambers. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Miller. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.